I'd just like to thank all our chamber members for the support they give us. Without you, we wouldn't exist. So we are very appreciative. And we're very grateful that so many are able to join us here this morning. Because we've got a great event and I'm delighted that so many can join us. As you know, last month, we had over forty people attend this event. And we focused very much on hospitality detail and the Borough of Culture, which is a very exciting opportunity across the region. And it's a real shame that Covid has curtailed some of the plans, but there's a great a great itinerary in store. So if you didn't get to join us last month, we do still have the slides and the information. So if you want to learn more about the Borough of Culture, then please do get in touch with us. There's a website with all the details on picture. We can send you. This morning's agenda is equally interesting. We've got Halton Haven joining us this morning. So at eight twenty, I'll be handing over to Viv if he's going to tell us a little bit more about Halton Haven, which is an amazing resource in the borough and one that we're very grateful for. At eight thirty, we've got David Parr at OBE, who's the CEO of Halton Borough Council, who's going to give us an update about what's been happening in the borough and also what's in effect over the next few months and the plans for the borough coming out of Covid and the difficult time we've all had. We'll then have some questions and answers. And then at ten past nine, we've got facilitated networking. And we're looking to close the meeting around nine thirty. But really depends how many questions we have and we'll do our best to keep the timetable. The breakout rooms will start around ten, nine, ten. You'll be automatically put into the breakout rooms and we'll have twenty minutes where you'll be able to talk to other fellow business owners. And then we'll rejoin the meeting automatically after that around nine thirty. So I'd just like to say a couple of things that are coming up in very near future. We've got some international trade training courses on the eleventh of June. We're doing customs compliance and on the seventh of July, we've got how to complete export documentation. And you can book all these events by giving us a ring or you can always drop us an email at the chamber. And you can also book online. There's a few social media training courses we've got planned. We're going to be focusing on Instagram, Facebook and Twitter. And then on the sixth of October, later on in the year, we're going to do LinkedIn. And health and safety is also something that has been had to be on hold for some of these over the last few months. So we're looking to kickstart in June with a supervising Thursday for mental health, which was a fantastic course. We ran it last year and it proved really valuable. It's an area that obviously we're very concerned about at the moment. And so we're looking to do a few more courses around mental health and some more support. We've got health and safety in June and we've also got fire wardens coming up on the eighth of September. And next month, we're going to be joined by Steve Rotherham. We're going to be meeting on the sixth of July at eight o'clock again. And of course, he's recently been voted in as the Metro Mayor for the second time of the Liverpool City Region. So he's going to be providing us with an update next month. We believe we'll still be virtual by then, but if anything changes between now and then, we'll let you know. And we did do a survey last month around whether we should remain virtual or start looking to do face-to-face networking again. And for the moment, there was some hesitancy still. So we'll be remaining virtual. And hopefully, you know, if things keep going according to plan, hopefully in September, maybe we'll go to see people face-to-face again. But we'll keep you informed. I know lots of people are very keen to meet once again. And I think we all miss that sense of community that we value so much. Another programme that we're running at the moment is Peer Networks. It's really looking to get groups, small groups of businesses together to support each other. So it's much smaller than these events we do. We look to get around ten to twelve businesses together where they can share ideas, solve each other's problems and really have that sense of working together to support each other. Because being in business, as you know, can sometimes be a little isolating and a little lonely. And so if you're interested in joining the peer network, please do get in touch with us. And I'd be delighted to tell you a little bit more about that programme. And the other initiative that we're running at the moment is Kickstart. We've got an amazing Kickstart candidate working with us on a six-month placement. And she works twenty-five hours a week. She's doing a fantastic job. And a hundred percent of the minimum wage is actually provided from the government to support her learning. We've also been given £1,500 and we're investing that in her training and education. So if you are interested in working with some young people under the age of twenty-five who are looking to start their careers and would like some support at what is a very valuable time, please do get in touch with us and we'll tell you a little bit more about that programme. So as you know, we've all gone purple this morning for Halton Haven Hospice. And I'm delighted to welcome Viv to tell us a little bit more about Halton Haven and what they're doing at the moment. Good morning, Viv. Let me just unmute you just one second. There we go.
Good morning. Good morning, everybody. Thank you for the invitation to do a presentation this morning. It's greatly appreciated. So my name's Viv Cullerton and I'm the CEO over at Halton Haven Hospice. So thank you for wearing purple. This is also greatly appreciated. So Purple Month runs from the first of June to the third of July. And the intent is to raise funds for your local hospice. You will see us on our social media and give you various options as to how you can support this venture. Next slide, please. So we've just launched a new appeal, which is to support keeping the hospice spick and span and obviously very clean and tidy. We've just recently had an infection control audit through the hospital, through five boroughs. And we came out at ninety-eight percent, which is fantastic. The cost to keep the hospice clean and tidy is around £95,000 a year. And with Covid, we need specialist equipment to enable us to open up to patients, families and obviously keep the staff safe as possible. This is an initiative that's been brought to the fore by our fundraising head, Aunt Headley. And is very intent on ensuring that we manage to get this piece of equipment. It certainly will benefit us greatly. We've actually had to sort of fluctuate the amount of visiting that we've been able to allow to the hospice, which has saddened us greatly. But obviously, it's important to keep everybody safe at this time. Some of the pictures are by colleagues in various places within the hospice. Yes, it's a very varied place to work. Lots of very passionate and committed people, I'm very pleased to say. So what does the hospice do? Well, we provide excellent palliative care to support adults over the age of eighteen with life-limiting conditions. The hospice needs to raise £2.6 million per year in order to be able to do this. We do receive some funding from the CCG, which we're extremely grateful for. The remaining amount we have to raise ourselves. And obviously, over the past eighteen months, that's been incredibly difficult for us to do. We've not been able to have the normal events scheduled that we normally have. That said, as always, the people of Halton, they rally and they rally and they rally. And they support us any which way they can. And we're very proud of being in a borough that is so reflective of what the hospice means to them. Our services are free, obviously, to our patients and families. And within the last two years, we've tried to think out of the box, show some initiative at various ways that we can fundraise. And one of those is our doggy daycare centre, which I'm not sure if you've heard of SIS Hound Haven. It's actually a trading subsidiary of the hospice and it does what it says on the tin. It enables doggy daycare. Part of that initiative was also to support the hospice patients. Quite often, we have families that want to remain on a vigil with their loved ones, but are very anxious at the fact they've got a dog at home. And the, you know, the dog will need to be fed, the dog will need to be let out. So we do actually reserve two places at our doggy daycare centre just for that. So that if a family member is feeling anxious and distracted from where their thoughts need to be, we can look after the dog for the day and give them the freedom to stay with their loved one. So that's images of our day hospice and our quiet room and the garden where our day hospice patients sit. So what do we do in day hospice? Day hospice is open four days of the week and under normal circumstances, we can accept twelve patients per day. Obviously, with Covid and distancing requirements and following the government guidelines, we've had to close for a long period of time. We've remained supportive of the patients that would normally attend day hospice via the phone. We've done jockeying off with food parcels and things of that nature. Thankfully, we've actually reopened day hospice, albeit on a much lower scale. So I think we're allowing three. We've actually been told we can go up to four patients a day, which is fantastic. Patients who attend day hospice are usually at the beginning of their palliative journey. So it's an excellent introduction into palliative care. And we hope that we can help that individual progress through the hospice and keep a good relationship that they feel comfortable and confident. They have familiarity with the staff. So by the time sadly they will reach our inpatient unit, it's like coming home. We're part of their family. And that's very important for us to do that. You mentioned the word hospice and, you know, a few people who don't know anything about hospice will cringe and have an automatic fear. We try to remove that fear at the very earliest opportunity. Oh, the kitchen. What can I say about the kitchen? Well, our catering staff are fantastic. They go above and beyond constantly. When a patient is in the hospice, obviously, they're very, very unwell. And may have certain fads or certain fancying of whatever. Our kitchen staff will move mountains, move mountains to make sure that the patients get what what they want at any particular time. Sadly, we've got major issues with our kitchen. And the floor area is very uneven and is posing a health and safety risk. We've had team people in to look at it and to scan. And we're currently receiving help from a member of the Chamber of Commerce to try and establish what actually sits underneath the initial flooring. And that will help us to determine what needs to be done and how cost effectively we can do it. So, you know, we are asking businesses to raise funds to support this initiative and the cleaning initiative. We're always asking for support and thankfully, we get it. But we have got some significant commitments that we need to sort out at this moment in time. And just reflecting back to day hospice, that is also one of them. Our day hospice sadly is a, the majority of the building is a prefab and it's well past its sell-by date. If we have torrential rain, we do get rain ingress and it's it's a major headache of what we're going to do with day hospice once we can no longer use that that part of the hospice and that time is fast approaching. Likewise, with the kitchen, that's going to be a massive hurdle to cross if we can't find the resources to fix the floor further. Slide please. So we can add days, we can't add days live, but we can add life to days. The feedback that we get from our families and patients and carers is what you would expect it to be. It's always excellent. And we're very proud, we're very, very proud of Halton Haven Hospice. You know, we're situated in a relatively deprived area. We're not sat on massive reserves, but what we do have, we're very careful with. We're, you know, we're very cost-effective and thrifty. And that's down to the people I work with. Everyone's accommodating of the fact that we don't have massive resources. And on many occasions, the answer is no to a request. But when it comes to patient safety and patient care, we will move mountains. We will literally move mountains. So we have a new website that's currently up and running. Well, my colleague Anne is tweaking it. It's constantly needing tweaking. But the new website, we hope, will enable people to find out more about Halton Haven with ease and various ways that you can help us to fundraise. We've got quite a few significant events coming up over the next couple of months. Say we're currently in purple month. We've also got T3 coming up and that will be rapidly followed by Light of Life, which is one of our most significant fundraising events. And of course, people of Halton are doing their own fundraising, which is amazing and will may it continue. So that's a whistle-stop tour of Halton Haven. I could actually talk about the hospice all day, every day. But time is limited and I know David is to follow. So thank you very much for this invitation. Thank you very much for wearing purple. This is greatly appreciated. And thank you for your support. And if you feel that you are able to offer any advice, guidance and any other current issues that we've got, we'd be more than happy to hear from you. So thank you.
Oh, thank you, Viv. It's an amazing place and one that is so valuable to everyone in the borough and so necessary as well. So anything we can do to help support you, we will do. And, you know, if you want us to promote anything or anyone's got any ideas that, you know, we need the community to get behind, then please do come forward and we'll work together to hopefully resolve some of the issues that you're facing at the moment.
Much appreciated, Rachel. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll be doing the question and answers later. I'm just going to check, Jane, has anyone got any questions at the moment?
No questions, just people sort of singing their praises for Halton Haven and how good they are.
Quite likely so. It is, it's an amazing place and we're both very lucky to have Halton Haven as a resource. Thank you. And now I'd like to hand over to David Parr, OBE, the Chief Exec of Halton Borough Council.
Thanks, Rachel, and good morning, everybody. And can I also pass on my congratulations to the work that Viv and her colleagues at the hospice do? It's a place I've visited regularly and it's a place that is impressive in every respect. And under Viv's leadership, it's going to go from strength to strength, I'm sure. So any support that businesses and colleagues can provide, I think would be gratefully received. Unfortunately, in this country, we fund our hospices through charity. I think that's a poor indictment to the country, actually. It should be a frontline service that's funded through government. But unfortunately, it isn't and we need to support Viv and her team as much as we can for the fantastic work they do. So well done, Viv and the team.
Thank you, David.
Okay, so let's go on to the next slide. That's just to remind me who I am in case I've forgotten. Notice, Viv, we've shifted the slides from the Halton logo today to a special purple for the hospice. So first slide from me explains the new council. Why am I calling it a new council? Halton's been around for quite a while. It's a new council because we've got new boundaries, not outside Halton, but within Halton. So we've got fifty-four councillors, we have fifty-six. So those numbers have dropped down because we had a boundary review. We've got eighteen wards, we've got nine each side of the river, three councillors per ward. Well, that makes you fifty-four up. And you can see there, the council is divided between those various parties with a strong Labour control of the council. Next slide, please. Just to give you some new names, many of you will know Rob Polver was the leader of the council. Rob's still a councillor, but he stood down as leader. That was by choice. He was going to stand down twelve months ago, but stayed on to support the community and the council through the Covid pandemic. And we thank him for doing that. But at these elections, he did stand down as leader. Councillor Mike Wharton is now the new leader. Some of you may know Mike. And the councillor for Hale, Hale Bank and Ditten. And councillor Dave Thompson is the deputy. He's one of our run-courne councillors. Mike's also identified eight portfolio holders and I've listed them there with their portfolios. Some will be known to you and have been in those roles for a while. Some are new to those roles. So Mike's freshened up the cabinet and I think there's some real opportunities moving forward. Draw your attention to the final portfolio on that list. And this is a new portfolio. The council signed up to the climate emergency agenda a little while ago. But we've never had a councillor with specific responsibilities for climate change. And we now have that councillor who's councillor Phil Harris. And I'm going to talk a little bit more about clean green energy later on in this presentation. So there's some names for you. We'll get this presentation out so you can, you don't need to jot all those names down, will there? I'm sure Rachel and the team will share that with callers. Next slide, please. Just to remind you of some other key political players, because we had quite a few elections in May. Councillor Steve Rotherham was re-elected as the Metro Mayor. And I think if you haven't signed up to Steve's talk for next first Tuesday, I would if I were you. He's a good speaker, he's got a lot to say and he's got a lot of exciting ideas, not just for the wider city region, but also for Halton. So I'm sure it'd be well worth your time signing into that call, virtual or otherwise. And we've also got a new police and crime commissioner for Cheshire. And that's John Dwyer. He was the Conservative candidate. He replaced David Keed, who was the former police and crime commissioner. So his responsibility is to oversee the police across the Cheshire footprint. And Halton is part of that Cheshire force area, as many of you will know. Next slide, please. Just want to give you a quick Covid update. I'm not going to dwell a lot on Covid at this presentation because I want to try to look forward rather than backwards. But I think it's worth reminding ourselves where we were and where we are. So in January of this year, our rate was thirteen hundred per hundred thousand seven days and it was the highest rate in the country. So some challenges that we all had to face. Today, it's twenty-one per hundred thousand seven days. Interestingly enough, two weeks ago, it was six. So I want to come on to variants of concern in a few minutes and explain why it started to go up again and some things that we perhaps all need to do to try and keep it down. Our vaccination, this is two doses, is very good. So we've got eighty-nine percent of all over sixties with both doses and nearly half the population of both doses. And that bear in mind that the government have only just started rolling out vaccinations to younger people. And I'm calling those under thirty. So if you're under thirty, that is young to me and perhaps a few others on the call as well. But I think it's really important that when you get called for your vaccination or if you have been called, you get that vaccination as soon as possible. Because there's a lot of evidence that it keeps you safe, it keeps your family safe, friends safe and your family safe. We have a very sophisticated test and trace system locally. There is a national scheme as well. But the local scheme that we set up through our public health team is one of the reasons we've been able to drive our rates down. So if you do test positive or you are self-isolating, you might get a knock on the door from them or they might give you a ring if you do. They're doing that for the very best reason, so please support them. Because they're there to help us to try and find out who's been associated with people who've tested positive so that we can track and trace and make sure people are as safe as possible. You'll heard a lot of variants of concern, whether that's the Indian variant or the variant that originated in India or Delta. That's the one that is the preeminent variant at the moment. That has a number of characteristics. It doesn't make you more poorly and the vaccine does work against it, but it does transmit very, very quickly, twice as fast as the previous virus did. And it does transmit very quickly in younger people, so particularly between fifteen and twenty-nine. We're seeing that's where most of our cases are at the moment. And that's specifically also because that cohort has yet to be vaccinated. So what's the best way to protect us from that variant? Well, there's three things that I encourage all of you to do. First of all, get a vaccination. It is safe. All the evidence and the science says it is safe, so please get a vaccination. Secondly, the best way to stop this virus transmitted, whatever variant it is, is to follow the hands, face, space, ventilation and open air mantra. So keep doing that and whatever variant is flying around, whatever name it's got, if you do that, that will keep you safe. And then thirdly, test regularly. The lateral flow tests available from lots of locations, including pharmacies, et cetera. So test a couple of times a week. They're non-symptomatic tests. And then you'll know that you're safe and you'll know that you're keeping your friends and family safe. And if you do that, I think we'll get on top of the variant. But what you are going to see over the next few weeks is an increase in numbers, not just in places like Blackburn and Bolton, but also across the country because we're already seeing that. So I've mentioned there the testing, so I won't mention that again. And I also want to mention the business support that we've been providing. So next slide, Rachel, please. So throughout the pandemic, we've been providing support to Halton businesses. I have to say, right from the outset, the government's scheme has been generous, but it's not covered every business. So some businesses have suffered quite significantly. And I recognise that. So as I say, that we've supported two and a half thousand Halton businesses and contributed thirty million. There may be some on the call who are sat there thinking, well, that's not me and that didn't help my business. And I've got every sympathy for those businesses. But we will continue to support those businesses coming out of Covid. The main focus has been on businesses like hospitality and leisure, which I think is recognised that being hit as hard as anybody. I'm not going to say harder than anybody because again, there'll be businesses who have been hit very, very hard and have fallen through the gap of the regime that the government set up for supporting businesses. Next slide, please. What I wanted to really focus on today was reset and recovery. And I focused on the word reset because I don't think what was normal eighteen months ago will ever be normal again. So really, it is about resetting our economy, resetting our communities from where we are now and working to try to recover our economy as best we can. We will have to live with Covid for some time to come, maybe forever. In the same way that we used to get flu jabs for vulnerable people, there'll probably be Covid jabs every single, moving into every winter going forward, until the scientists can come up with something that saves us all. So the government roadmap, we're going to hear from government over the next week or so, what the position is post the twenty-first of June. I would not be surprised to hear the government putting some brakes on that because of the variants. I don't know what they're going to do. They don't share that with us in advance. But all the evidence suggests that there may be some breaks put on and certain parts of the country might find themselves more restricted than other parts of the country. I don't think the word lockdown will be used because the Prime Minister's made it clear he's not going back. I don't think the word lockdown will be used because the Prime Minister's made it clear he's not going back to lockdown, but perhaps different language will be used for similar measures to protect certain areas. I also think this is possibly the point when we just need to reflect on the tragedy and the loss. I don't think there's probably anybody in the country who hasn't experienced tragedy and loss, family, friend or relative. We've all experienced sadness and my thoughts are with everybody for those they have lost and it's been a very sad and tragic time. There are of course opportunities as well as challenges and we're now starting to try to relaunch our regeneration activities, housing, employment, skills, transport, all things that will hopefully start to get the economy going again. I should put education in there as well because our children have missed their education and we're concerned about those children and students catching up. I know James on the call and I know the college is working really hard to try and help fill the gaps that have been lost when people have been had to self-isolate or bubbles have had to self-isolate. So next slide. We have our own roadmap, it's our strategic plan. I'm not going to go through it, but I have put the link at the bottom of this slide. And if you go to the newsroom on the council's website, you can get all the Corona advice that you need on all sorts of matters. So if you want to look at that in your own leisure, please do. But what we've tried to do in this roadmap is map forward how the council will put its services back in place and how we will work with the community to help the community to reset. What I should say of course is that some, if not all, the council services have continued to operate throughout Covid. Although many of us have worked remotely as we're doing today, you can't empty a bin remotely. You can't keep children safe remotely. You can't look after old people who are vulnerably in care homes remotely. I'd just like to say to colleagues, thank you for the remarkable work that they've done. And also thank you to the public for complying with the rules that have been placed upon us. They've been very, very difficult, some we've agreed with, some we haven't agreed with, but the majority of Holton's residents have tried to comply. Some haven't and we've taken action against them, but most have. Next slide please. So just to conclude on that little bit, I think that the last eighteen months, some days we've been grumpy. Some of us have been happy on occasions because we might not have had to do the commute that we've done. We might have been able to have more time with our families because we've been working from home. So it's been a real mixed bag and everybody's experience is different. Every business experience is different, every family experience is different. And what I'm not going to be able to do today is to satisfy everybody because that would be impossible because we are such a diverse society and economy. But we will try to support people as best we can. Next slide please. So there are many reasons to be optimistic and I'm just going to drop a few images in now as we flick through, Rachel, about some of the really positive things that are going on. The first thing to remember about Holton is the quality of the economy. And just looking at this slide, we can see the quality of some of the businesses that we have here, international, national businesses, right at the sharp end of industry. Local businesses as well as international businesses, you know, ranging from massive companies like IBM to the many businesses that are based in the Heath Business Park, for example, or at Dartsbury or Three MG, major players like Alstom and Stobart, you know, international companies like Carpet Additives, they took over LPW, for those of you who remember LPW. So we've got a really good base for building back better. And here's just some examples, if your business isn't on there, it's only because I haven't got enough space on the slide. That could have put three and a half thousand businesses on there across the whole of the Holton footprint. Next slide please. So I think what you've been particularly interested is about how we can support businesses going forward. We do have a business support team. Teams part of a wider support team on regeneration, housing, employment, learning and skills, property asset management. We work alongside the Chamber, Rachel touched earlier about the growth platform and Kickstart. We will signpost businesses to a wide range of support and advice, as I know the Chamber do. And we do provide a business account management service to key businesses in key sectors. So if you want to know more, look at our website or sign up to our newsletter and there's a regular flow of information for businesses of all shapes and sizes. Next slide please. That's really just to reiterate the employment, learning and skills offer. It's a comprehensive offer, you can see there in that jigsaw, a number of the different components that are available. And again, if you contact us or the Chamber, then we can signpost you or put you on a pathway to provide as much advice and support as we can to help your businesses to reset and to grow and recover. Next slide please. Want to touch now on the wider regeneration strategy. So just before the pandemic hit us, we established our Mersey Gateway plus regeneration strategy. So we always knew once Mersey Gateway was in place that that would create lots of opportunities for us to regenerate the borough and you can see on that slide, a number of locations, some existing that we're redeveloping, places like Manor Park, Sandy Moor and White House Vale and others that are new around the Old Town of Runcorn and Three MG, the Ditten Corridor and out onto Widnes Waterfront. So there's a whole range of sites that in such a small borough are available for the regeneration and creation of employment and opportunity. Next slide please. And it's not just the local authority that's investing. So Gortsy Point, some of you will know this, just down the road from Fiddlet's Ferry, you'll see that the work's taking place there. That's a private investment taking place to deliver almost four hundred thousand square feet of building. It's currently under construction and there's some exciting opportunities there and job creation. It's going to be available in the not too distant future, you can see there quarter to twenty twenty-two, so that's not very far away. Next slide please. Alstom have joined us, so Alstom relocated their plant from Preston. This plant refurbishes trains and builds trains. They're currently doing the Avanti fleet off the West Coast Main Line. But the other thing they're also doing is they're building the next generation of train, hydrogen trains. So clean green energy, very much at the heart of our economy in Holton and creating new jobs and opportunity in a healthy, safe environment. Next slide please. The Runcorn Town Deal, so we're anticipating a government decision on this, hopefully in the next two to three weeks. We've made a bid for twenty-five million pounds to invest in seven projects, there they are on that slide. So it's a raft of opportunities to try and regenerate the town centre of Runcorn. You can never be certain of government funding, but we're optimistic, we believe a strong case is being put forward. And the thing for me about this particular project is it's not just the council that's doing it, that we've got lots of partners working with us. So Unlock the Locks are working with us to try and bring the canal back to life. We've got Holton Housing working with us on the housing. We've got people into partnership, working with young people. We've got the hospital at Warrington and Holton Hospital working with us. So it's a real collection of partners working forward to deliver a really significant improvement to Runcorn Town. And I'm going to show just a couple of slides going forward. So this is the new station quarter that we're currently developing. You can see the station in the forefront there and our aspiration is to develop something very similar to that. It won't look exactly like that, but our aspiration is to create a transport hub where when you arrive into Runcorn, into Holton, into the city region, into Cheshire and Warrington, you get a welcome rather than a large brick wall that used to be a road. And if the next slide, I think demonstrates that better than anything. So the image on the left-hand side as you look is what you used to get when you came out of the station. And you can see there ongoing work in the middle of the page there to create that piazza area and to open up the area, so it's a welcoming transport hub that links into the town centre and doesn't isolate the station from the town centre. Next slide please. We're looking, as you would expect, to develop our creative and digital opportunities in Holton. And this is what we're looking to do with High Street in Runcorn, the Old Town, to regenerate some of those buildings and the big Z for this within that list of seven. Next slide please. We're looking to extend the Brindley, those of you who use the Brindley will know there's not always a place that you can eat before you go. So we're looking to create a restaurant and cafe that will not only be available when you go to the Brindley, but will be available to the town as well. And you'll see there creating more greenery in a steps, a green steps, walkway up to the Brindley, just to create a more friendly, greener atmosphere. Next slide please. And we have some great aspirations to open up the locks in Runcorn and to create a visitor centre and a bridge, a lift to lift barges up so that it can come in, go down, turn around, come out again. And that will be a fantastic visitor centre and we'll reopen the locks and hopefully in the fullness of time, we'll be able to open that canal back onto the ship canal so that we get the whole link around the Cheshire loop for the canals. So again, what we're doing here is trying to create a housing offer, a tourist offer, a business offer, an education offer, so that it's a holistic approach to the developments of that part of Holton. Next slide please. We're also working with Holton Lee on developing the area around Shopping City, but not just Shopping City, East Lane House, the Old Courts, Runcorn, Holton Five and also Trident and then the wider housing development that people like Riverside and Onwood are bringing forward. So a detailed master plan for Holton Lee as well. Next slide please. And there are some exciting plans for the revamping of Holton Hospital, modernising the area. So the hospital's a traditional hospital on one level and we're looking to put all those facilities into a three or four-storey building, which frees up some space to create some housing offer as well there. But at the same time, brings a modern treatment facilities into the hospital. And we've got a bidding with government to do that at the same time as there's a bidding for a new Warrington Hospital. So the hospital, which is Warrington and Holton Hospital, is looking to invest in both of its sites. And that's exciting plans. Site at Dartsbury continues to go from strength to strength. It's a preeminent facility within the country, internationally renowned. Next slide please. So the current project that's being built out is Project Violet. As you can see there, it's a sixty million pound scheme. Project Ultraviolet is going to planning permission and that's the next one up on the site. Next slide please. So you can see there that we're not just talking about investment, this is investment. That's a picture taken a couple of weeks ago of the development of Project Violet. And Ultraviolet is the next step up the hill to the A fifty-six. You can see how that might look in that image there on the right-hand side. Next slide please. Really, really significant announcement this week for the Hartree Centre. So a two hundred million pound plus investment from government and IBM to develop a new Hartree Centre. This is taking the next step in artificial intelligence, quantum computing and cloud technologies. Some of you on the call will know what that means better than I do, but I think it's the next stage of computing. And as we know, we're sat here on our computers at the moment. I think the future of work, the future of our communities is very much driven by the next stage of computing. How many of us have got Alexas or Google Systems in our house that we talk to and talk back to us quite scarily? So that was announced this week, we've been working on that with government probably for the best part of eighteen months. And it's great to see that investment, which we think will deliver an uplift of up to a billion pounds in GVA improvement nationally. Next slide please. We're also doing a lot of work around Runcorn, West Runcorn and Inovin. And Inovin are investing heavily in the location. They're an international company, they can put their business wherever they want around the world, but they're putting their investment into Runcorn. Next slide please. And there's an example of that, there's their new office block that's starting to take shape and that will be the home for some of their international businesses. Next slide please. So to talk about clean green energy and hydrogen is significant on that site and we are leading the way in hydrogen technology. As I said, Alstom building hydrogen trains, we're looking at hydrogen buses. There are already hydrogen buses running on the route from St Helens into Liverpool and we're developing that hydrogen offer. Next slide please. But it's not just about hydrogen, we're also looking at solar. Some of you will know the old St Michael's Golf Course in Widnes. Unfortunately, it's fairly heavily contaminated, so we can't build on it. So we've put some solar panels on it and that solar is going to provide electricity for the stadium in Holton, for the new leisure centre and for council buildings. So it will pay for itself very quickly and we'll be using clean green energy and trying to reduce the amount of council tax we have to ask you to pay or business rates because we are using recyclable energy that's cheaper and cleaner and more effective. Next slide please. It's not just about business, we need places for people to live and we're developing our housing offer, there's just a couple of examples of us shifting the housing offer in the borough from the traditional terraced houses that we've had previously to more modern, open properties. Next slide please. And again, it's not just about work and living, it's also about play. So this is the new leisure centre that we're proposing to build on the More Lane site opposite the old Bus Depot. And it will be a wellness centre, there'll be a pool in there and it'll be a brand new leisure facility that people can enjoy. Next slide please. And coming to an end, we've continued to improve connectivity. You will be aware that Silver Jubilee has been closed for a long time. Silver Jubilee reopened in the middle of the pandemic. It's now a local bridge, it's got cycleways on, making it easier to get around on cycles and walkways. So healthy living, healthy transport and Mersey Gateway continues to provide the superb connectivity that helps our businesses to thrive. Next slide please. I won't dwell on this, but I couldn't do a presentation without referring to the Borough of Culture. We want to celebrate Holton and this is an opportunity to do it and encourage you to go to those websites for more information. And I've dropped on the next slide a little bit more information that you can take away of the things that are going to be happening around the Borough of Culture. So final slide, I think it is. So the question is, are we going to be grumpy today? Are we going to be happy and look forward to the future? I hope what we've been able to demonstrate is that despite the challenges, and there will continue to be challenges, that the future is bright and we can be optimistic about the future. But there will be an awful lot of hard work and graft before we can get back to anywhere near where we were eighteen months ago. So I'll pause there, Rachel, I know there's a few hands gone up. So I'll pause there, Rachel. I know there's a few hands gone up and I'll take any questions and try to deal with those as best I can. Thank you for listening, everybody.
Thank you, David. Um that was really informative and it just goes to show how much work is being done across the borough. And Karen, I know you've had your hand up for for an awfully long time, so thank you for being so patient. And it's good that you're able to join us this morning and your technology is working.
Yes, um yeah, David, um I just had a quick question with regards to boundaries. Um as you touched on earlier, um I've lived on Palace Fields for pretty much all of my civilian life. Um but where I lived um was traditionally classed as Weaver Vale, despite it being in Palace Fields. Yet literally over the road was classed as sort of the Holton Lee ward. Has that been moved or are there plans to move that? Because it's, you know, it's well and truly inside where you'd expect to be the Holton Lee area.
So we have some interesting boundaries. Uh the boundaries you're talking about are the parliamentary boundaries, Karen. And there is actually a parliamentary boundary review taking place. Um and so I would keep an eye out for that because I think the government may well tweak the boundaries around where you are and you may find yourself either staying in Weaver Vale as a parliamentary constituency or moving across into what I think is likely to be called uh Runcon and Widnes constituency. Um so I mean, as a state, keep an eye out in in the media for that. Uh and you can make representations if you want. Uh but from Holton boundaries, Holton Council boundaries, uh you're well and truly in the heart of Runcon and Holton. And we want to continue working with you and your business and and trying to help your business thrive and and grow.
Yeah, thank you. Brilliant.
Thank you. Jane, I'm going to turn to you if that's okay. Um if we've got any questions, I was concentrating on the clicking through the presentation, so I've not been able to follow some of the chat.
Yeah, so Joanne's put, there's so much improvement for the borough, it all sounds great. Are there any updates on the Asmoor industrial estate regeneration, please?
Uh yeah, absolutely. Um we're working closely with with colleagues around Asmoor. Asmoor's one of those sites within that regeneration master plan. Um and we've got some colleagues working on 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 the regeneration of the Asmoor site. Um so if you want to drop me a note, I can give some more detail on on what stage we're at. Um and and feel free to drop me a note to, my email's very easy, david.park with two R's at holton.gov.uk.
Fabulous. Thank you.
And there's people just saying, thank you. It's all looking very exciting and a great time living in Holton. And said she's particularly excited for the canal initiative and the Brindley expansion.
Jane, I didn't catch that. Was that a question or a comment?
Just a compliment, really.
But we're good, we'll take that. Normally I deal with the complaints, but it's nice to get a compliment now and again. Thank you.
One's very, very excited. I don't know if there's more hands up, though.
So if anyone's got a question, now's your time. Uh I'd just like to uh beat out um the information around uh the ability that you could text per month to seven double O eight five to make three pounds today. Um so text would just cost three pounds in your standard rate message and all that money would go to Holton Haven and help support the amazing work that they're delivering as we speak and every day. So we're very grateful for that. Thank you. And thank you, David, for joining us this morning and for your presentation. It's very impressive to see how much is happening in Holton. And and we very much look forward to working with you and the council and helping deliver um the great environment to help our businesses thrive in after what's been quite a challenging time. But um as is very evident, uh good things in the future. I've just seen, someone else just sent a message, Jade.
Um if you're saying thank you, there's lots going on and I've just put in a feedback form.
So can I just, can I just conclude, Rachel, by just reminding people, hand, face, space, ventilation, vaccination and regular testing because we don't want to go back to thirteen hundred cases because that will put us all back in lockdown and we will be Miss, I will be Mr. Grumpy and you will be Miss or Mrs. Grumpy and we want to be happy, not grumpy. So please hand, face, space, ventilation and vaccination.
Thank you, David. That's a very valuable reminder. We now have a a family tradition on a Sunday and a Wednesday evening. We all sit down and get our lapel flow test out and do our testing. So uh yes, we've got a new tradition in our house and I'm sure many on the call are sharing me in the two tests a week. And so if everyone's okay, we're going to go now to the facilitated um table networking, virtual table networking. So we'll all automatically be given and allocated a room and I look forward to seeing everyone in twenty minutes.